Hello, everybody. Wes Faley Transparency here. Today is July 18th, 2022. It's coming up to 7 o'clock. I'm going to be heading down to the Sheridan City Hall and be able to listen in to the discussions for today. And I believe one of the discussions, which I feel is important, is trying to figure out what's going to happen with the property that fell in essentially, the building that fell in not too long ago. And we're going to figure out what's going to be happening. The meetings start at 7 o'clock. And we're going to figure out what's, how things are to proceed and be able to go from there. So I'm going to go ahead and step towards the Sheridan City Hall. So as a reference, I went down to the City Hall not too long ago and asked a whole lot of questions about how the city council feels about citizens exercising their first amendment right as free press to be able to document what's been going on in the community. And I talked to Yvonne. Yeah, Yvonne, I believe that's how she's pronounced her name. She said it's totally fine. This will be a good first opportunity to see how, for me, how the city council will be able to relate to those who want to exercise their rights as free press or are just listening in to. So me just going here just to observe strictly on what's going on and the decision making and hearing both parties and hearing what's going on and figuring out how we're going to move forward as a community here in Sheridan. All right, here is the Sheridan City Hall. Again, it's Monday. It's a wonderful day today. We're going to see how everything goes and that way I'll be able to relate to my subscribers, my followers, my viewers, to see what's going on in our lovely community here in Sheridan. Let's see if it's open. All right, so let's see what happens here.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Not as much. I saw my first papers yesterday.
So in case anyone's interested in what the topic is going to be.
With hers? I went and visited somebody and I don't think so. It was her. She saw one and she felt love, so then it was not very pretty.
And here are honorable members of the council today. We have Rose right there on the left. We have Jim. We have Sandy. I see Walt, Lucy, and Danny. So we are going to see if the other two show up. All right, looks like they're all here today. And for those of you who haven't met Heidi Bell, our new city manager, she's sitting right there at the very front, that's closest to us, the people. And we're here to hear what's going to be happening in the City Hall with both parties when it comes to the building as one each of us.
Does everybody who plans to speak tonight in the room have a comment card into the mayor for general public comments?
Yes.
If you're not already on your agenda for something else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have one, please?
Making sure so. I really need a moment.
Here.
Echo.
Here.
Heber.
Here.
Recording in progress.
Walker.
Here.
Buckles.
Here.
Mottor Road.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for a flag of allegiance.
Flight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you addition conditions to the agenda items?
Not to the agenda. We do have documents later that will entrance in record as we go along.
We have some folks from Agile that would like to see connect. And so can we move them down to item F for presentation? So before I open it up to the first public comment period, a couple things order. If you have someone, please sign this. This could be a long meeting, so if any disruptions or minimalistic things can be. The next thing is, Walt, can you give an explanation about?
Well, there's one agenda item, which is an ordinance setting a time and place for a public hearing on a proposed annexation. That is just that. It is just setting a time and place for the public hearing. The public hearing is not tonight. Instead, a public testimony won't be taken on annexation. If you see that on the agenda and thought that this was a public hearing for the annexation, that's not correct. So you're certainly welcome to stay and encourage to stay, but not required to do so if you came for that purpose.
In addition, it will first go before the planning commission.
Yes, there is a public hearing before the planning commission that's coming up soon.
August 8th.
August 8th, and then it will come back to the city council after that.
So the place to take any testimony for that is on August 8th. So we'll be in this room in front of the planning commission.
All right. Like those in the first public comment period, the public comment portion of the agenda is doubtful for the council to listen to the public, but not to dialogue. The public is allowed free access to exact information relevant to the city. The topic issued brought up may be referred by the council to the city management for inclusion on a subsequent council agenda. Council has the discretion to ask questions after the comments have concluded. Please note complaints should be first addressed to the appropriate city department and/or city manager as far as directly addressing the city council. All right, so I have four cards. The first one, Ernie, Hebert. Okay. Liz.
Hi, I'm Liz Hodgens, and I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. And I have some questions about, and I guess it's not time for the first question, but I do have a question about the situation with the Riverside Cafe and the Parks and Rec's role in that. And what I was wondering was, what is the proper protocol between the city council and the Parks and Rec community as far as when people come to the council about a park's issue? Do they come to us and we make a recommendation to you? That was my understanding. Or do they come to the council and it goes from there? Because I feel like we're not involved in those issues, parks issues, that we're just a puppet arm of the city council rather than a viable committee. So I was a little concerned about that at the last meeting. So that's what I guess my question is, is what is the proper protocol for when people have a parks issue? Do they come to us first and we make a recommendation to you? Or is it okay for them just to go directly to the city council?
Mayor's asking me to come in, so I will.
Okay.
The answer to that is the people can come to either. They're not prescribed in terms of city ordinance or prevented from appearing before council as this is what a public comment period is for and people often do. The city council, if it wishes to take jurisdiction over that comment or that question, can, if it wishes, or it more normally tends to delegate to its standing committees and get recommendations from those committees. So it's fully informed and the matter is vetted more fully before the council takes action. So that is a kind of a standard procedure. It's not required. The council can make exceptions to that procedure if it feels it's important to do so. And so I hope that answers your question.
Well, the reason I'm asking is the Hebert Park Committee, the subcommittee of the Parks and Rec Committee, actually have a lot more knowledge of the deed than we do, please, to this and what's going on with that plaza and what it can be used as.
And this is on the agenda tonight. It's an agenda item on the agenda still.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, it wasn't a podcast on the cafe and the plaza, but it sounds like. So I did attend the, so I am Erin Thompson of Sheridan. And I am on a subcommittee of the Parks and Rep and Rotary. And we kind of focus on the three parks by the river. So that would be the Morgan Street Park, the Plaza, and the Chestermore Park. So I'm going to skip over what I was going to say about the cafe then, and I'm going to move on to. I took this to the park speaking at the park the other night and got the go-ahead on this one. So I hope I'm following the proper channels. What it is, is that the subcommittee would really like to recommend a survey deed and documentation search for the three parks. The committee feels that contradictory and confusing information found in these three parks regarding where the property lines are located and who owns or controls several sections of these parks. So the Chestermore Park, does the city of Sheridan have a 99-year lease with the Chestermore estate for the use of this park? If so, when did the lease originate? When will it end? Do we have copies or agreements for that? And then IGA is said to own the bank from their parking lot down to where the ground level is at. Is that right? And Rotary Club is said to have added the cement staircase in the early 90s. Does Rotary own the staircase? Did they get an easement to build it from Chestermore or from the city? And who's responsible for the maintenance? And who has liability on that staircase? There's a ditch running through the middle of the Chestermore Park. And we've heard that the county has an agreement with the city for this ditch. And then we've also heard that no, it's a drainage ditch for the city. So it'd be nice to know which way that is. And then the county bridge area, we know that Yandel County owns and maintains our bridge. But how much of the land beneath it and around it does the county control? So, you know, because that would extend out into the parks possibly. And then the Morgan Street Park, many people have mentioned that this park in Sheridan is located on this beautiful river and that the general public has very little access to that river. And so parking for the downtown area, river access and a boat launch were stated as the primary purposes for this park when the city purchased that property in 1991. Morgan Street used to run all the way down and into the river. People used to launch small boats, inner tubes, rubber rafts. Did the city take equipment to this location and clear the brush to restore it to the way that it had been? I was wondering about that. And the buildings that border Morgan Street Park most likely have parking behind their buildings. The committee would like to know how far the parking extends from the building toward the park to ensure that we don't encroach on those businesses' property with any of our plans. And then we had no idea what the parking lines are that we need to respect around 106th Ave Bridge. So the committee feels it's important to have this information and any other pertinent information before making any future or improvements in the area. Thank you.
Is it possible to be a copy of the list?
Sure.
Excellent questions, Ryan.
Oh, thank you.
Next, I'd like to hear from Paulette.
Okay, Paulette Ritchie. I live at 120 Southwest Morgan, across from where Robin used to live, where his house was burned. And I didn't realize that I had to complain to the city council before I agree with you guys. But I would compliment the chief of the fire department. He was the only one that came to our residence to let us know what was going to be happening. We had never heard from anybody from the city council on what was going to be happening over there. Because we've lived there for 35 years. I don't even think you guys know where we lived there or there is a residence there. And we put a lot of work in that place. And it's like that boat ramp, how often is that going to get used? Three months out of a year, maybe? You need to consider that. Another thing is too, is that that Masala Building, when it was being torn down and they were getting all the debris off of there, we tried to talk to the owner for him to mist all that dust. And my husband and I would talk to him and talk to him, and he goes, "No, we can't mist it because it's going to go into the river." We were talking about misting it. Because I got videos of that dust coming right into our residence. Nobody cared. And then when they came to clean it up, they were all suited up with a mask and everything. And thus, we had lived with that dust for quite a few days, at best, and everything, but nobody knew nothing. Another one is that the house that Robin lived in, my opinion is that it was burned down because the city council had an agenda for it. If it would have been upgraded, wiring, new wiring, everything upgraded through the years, it wouldn't have had to be burned down. Our house is older than that house is. Our house has been upgraded through the years. How many residents in Sheridan that have been upgraded? If it would not have been upgraded, there would have been ghosts down out here. And I disagree with it had to be burned down. And I want to compliment the owner of the cafe. We need that cafe. There is nothing in Sheridan except a Mexican restaurant. That cafe is really nice. It's done so well that that is needed here. And I know there's a lot of problems with the city council and barb. And it's too bad, it's Sheridan code. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paulette. Here, Paulette.
Is there anybody ongoing that would like to comment? I see none. The, prior to the presentation, under letter C, I apologize, council, is conditions and deletions. I wanted to move one item, letter M, number 6, the Riverfront Cafes. I would like to move that to the presentation. So we'll hear from Agile and then we'll address Riverside Cafe. If that's okay? I appreciate the break. Agile.
Hi. Did you skip over E, which is the public hearing?
I did. Agile, I have a poll to answer.
No poll, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I'd like to open up the public hearing. Sheridan Development Code Amendment 16.203.120, farm uses and livestock to be consistent with the recently adopted ordinance, allowing chickens in residential districts, page number LA 2022, that's 01, page number 126.
Mr. Mayor, this amendment to your land use ordinance is essentially to harmonize them with the recent ordinance the council passed, allowing the creation of chicken ferments and allowing those to take place if they're approved by the city in various zones. This, in effect, incorporates the chicken ordinance into the development code. So that's what these amendments are proposed to do. I don't know if Heidi has any further comments in that regard as my way of staff report.
No, I think you said it perfectly. It's just to harmonize the two codes. Yeah, that's the, so you opened it.
So I'd like to call for abstentions regarding the Sheridan Development Code Amendment. Is there any abstentions? Is there any objections to the jurisdiction?
It doesn't matter.
Staff or community report on it?
That was the staff report, so.
The staff report is submitted in the interim and it is in your packet for you. It was written by Jim Jack. It is on pages 1 through 6, right, of your packet. Do you think we have any questions regarding the staff report? Or have there been changes made? There have not been any changes made to the staff report at this time. It really is just exactly what the city attorney said. It's just to harmonize the city code or bring the development code rather up to speed. If there are changes that have been made to the municipal code to allow for incidents. On page 5, you can see your options. But that's later in the meeting when we get to the ordinance, right? Oh, no, that's after your second. When you get to the point where you're about to vote. Okay, next, in the public hearing.
The proponents case?
We have no proponents. It's legislative.
Yeah, this is a city application on behalf of the city. So there's no, there's no applicant here.
Okay, questions of proponents?
No, skip that, it's legislative.
Okay, proponents case?
Skip.
Questions of opponents?
Skip.
Other comments or questions?
We didn't go here to speak about chickens regarding the development code, not regarding the development code. So no.
Public agency reports? Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation that you approve, etc. Do they have your votes mixed up together?
Are you allowed to have proponents and opponents? At this time, I'd like to propose up the hearing.
I want the record saved at time.
As. 7:20. 7:24.
7:20, something. Next, on the second floor.
Thank you, sorry for passing over. Item F, presentation, Agile. Thank you, just so, two things. One is, because the public hearing as mayor, being the new mayor, that was my first public hearing. So that's why I would kind of do. The next thing is.
I'm reading through the card. And number 14 says deliberation and decision. And then page 5 of 188 says the council may make motion either or in our several choices.
I think it's not the same.
Under K, under the K2 is that this deliberation.
I mean, we'll even vote on it tonight because this isn't an emergency order.
Well, you can vote the first and second time. You just can't vote the third.
I just want to know where.
Yeah, I promise not to keep interrupting. You have two young.
I will be dissuaded from here.
You have two young people, which is.
I have one that is intent to address everyone and then myself, and then we've got two expert counsel back here.
Right, but you have two.
They're just. Present, yes.
Would you send both of them off to me, please?
I'd love to. Go ahead, go ahead. Right to the center.
The mayor has something for you.
Mayor, I'm not even from Sheridan.
Me being the mayor, okay? And this is my appreciation to you as your wife's mom. And I believe in you. And I thank you for all you do. And happy birthday.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, too.
Hi, my name is Nicole Miravito. And this is Tiffany Heano. And we're president and vice president of Agile. We're a nonprofit youth organization. And we've met Mayor Cox at Home Town Days, and he invited us to come introduce ourselves, which is important, but more importantly here, we're here to speak on a youth sports emergency. And I definitely am, I'm not using that word lightly at all. Slight background information, in 2019, Tiffany and I started a nonprofit specifically to offer club volleyball because Kathy Byers, Lynx, Sheridan Volleyball Club, I don't know if any of you are familiar with what I'm talking about. When they disbanded, there was a gaping hole left in our community. And we were not even going to pretend that we tried to fill it. We little bandied in 2019 with 12 youth athletes that over the years has grown to 150 Sheridan youth athletes that, no exaggeration, would not be able to participate in youth sports without the service of a nonprofit youth organization. And we went from club volleyball to also basketball and youth cheerleading. And. And we went from club volleyball to also basketball and youth cheerleading and football, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, but I'm just introducing, we're on Facebook, we're around, we love to answer any questions you have about Agile, and I want to introduce you to one of our youth athletes, huge advocate for youth sports, and I want to give her a moment to speak about why youth sports are so important. Uh, this is Jasmine, go on Jasmine.
Hi, my name is Jasmine, and I am 15 years old as of today, and not only am I here talking to you guys, but I'm also the Sheridan High School ASB liaison and the class secretary for class of 2025. And I'm here advocating for Agile because I think it's very important for youth to be involved with sports starting from a young age, because to be honest, when I was younger, I was not the greatest kid. I went from getting suspended, getting referrals, almost having an expulsion hearing, and to being a great student, having all my credits, being on state, state.
Rank.
State ranked volleyball team, all because of Agile. And I feel like it's very important for people to start young so that they don't go down the wrong path, because I truly believe that Agile saved my life and I don't know where I would be without them. And, yeah.
So what Agile can do. Thank you. So what Agile.